In just the next few minutes, we really can say that we've-
Mr. Boxer will not be here. I'm not certain about the Mr. Kennedy, Pernie, or Welsh, but if we have a quorum, which we do, there's no reason not to proceed.
Okay. Here comes Mr. Kennedy. Take it our youth members are absent today.
There's only a few more days of school, so.
Can't blame them, I guess. I'm surprised they were here over spring break. Well, we have a quorum, and the staff and the technology are ready. I'll call the May 7 meeting of the Salina City Planning Commission to order. Welcome to the applicants and the public and commissioners. First order of business is a summary minutes from the last meeting. Are there comments or a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Administrative items. Item number two, application P-13, four slash four A. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a proposed replat. It is out in the Airport Industrial Center area, and that area was first platted back in 1988. And the development that's occurred out there started from the north with Wall Street developing first, and that phase is largely built out. And now we're talking about the south leg, which is on Vortex Avenue, formerly known as Wertz Street. And this is the location right here of Salina Vortex, and that's the origin of the Vortex Avenue name. And so what you do not see on your aerial photo right here is a new FedEx distribution facility that is located there, that is outside of the replat area. And this is the leftover piece of the FedEx lot. And what the Airport Authority is proposing to do is to take this and basically combine this and divide it into two lots. The primary changes that have occurred out here, there have been a number of replats, one in 1999 and one in 2007. The original plat had, you can see this right here. This is a very inconveniently located water line that basically ran right through the center of these two lots. That has now been relocated, so it runs along the edge of the runway here, goes east to west here, and then goes up this direction. And so these easements are now gone. And John, if you could get us ahead to the proposed plat that we're talking about here. This would be the preliminary plat layout showing existing physical features. And again, our water line starts here at Waterwell Road, comes up, it's been relocated to here, and comes across here, and then it goes out in this alignment towards the front. And so the water line and water line easement that were basically in the heart of those two lots have been relocated and easements provided accordingly. The other thing that occurred was when the plat was originally laid out in 1988, there were plans for a taxiway coming off the runway right here accessing these lots, and that has been eliminated. So what we're talking about is taking the multiple lots that we've had out here in different configurations and taking them and creating a 13 acre and an eight and a half acre lot at the west terminus of Vortex Avenue. And the taxiways that were proposed originally are no longer part of the plan. The 12 inch water line that formerly ran through the center of these lots has been relocated. The original concept here was that drainage would be addressed on a lot by lot basis as building permits were reviewed, and that is still the plan. And then what we advise the surveyor is, and have been advised by the Register of Deeds, is that every time you replat, the title of the plat gets longer and longer and longer. So the proposal is, we have Airport Industrial Center subdivision. This would be titled Airport Industrial Center Subdivision Number Two, and then it would be indexed under that. And we have suggested that as a condition on page three of the report, the addition of a flood note and abstract or certificate title on the drawing. We've asked the surveyor to confirm the alignment of this east-west section of this line because this preliminary plat drawing will be referred to in the future by others as to where the actual location of the line is. An easement has been provided for it, and there is an easement on the other side, but we want to confirm whether the line's entirely south of the common lot line or north or both. And then we'd recommend that as part of the plan for development, the Fire Marshal and Director of Utilities have indicated that a water line stub here that ties in with an existing water line and hydrant here would be needed to allow these last lots to develop. And so we would need an easement dedicated from the end of this cul-de-sac up to there to allow that loop. And as we indicated, drainage studies would be submitted on a building permit review basis rather than as part of this replat. So we've outlined five recommended conditions there. I'd be open to any questions that you have. And John, if you could go back maybe to one, the vicinity map. I will let Mr. Rogers from the Airport Authority explain to you the concept of eliminating this taxiway that shows up there when we're all done with this. That will all be gone and no longer show up on any maps. But I'd be open to any questions you have about the replat.
Other questions to staff? May we hear from the applicant? And your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Tim Rogers, the Executive Director for the Salina Airport Authority. And first off, Salina Airport Authority concurs with staff recommendations as outlined in your report. And many of the changes, several of the changes have already been completed by the surveyor and by Lochner, and that is in process. And we have comments already on some of the plan sheets to the surveyor, to Lochner. This area, again, the development started in 1999. As it develops in stages, of course, as lots get sold and developed, kind of were changed the character of the area. And we are at the, kind of the last part of this area along Vortex Avenue. The FedEx ground distribution facility left a remainder to accommodate that track, and we can combine that remainder into the replat that you have before you today. The taxiway area that's depicted on the original plating of this area was a concept to open this area up to aviation aerospace use and have a taxiway into that area. At this point in time, we have taken that development plan. We have targeted the north area along, south of Tony's Road, along Hine Avenue, generally to the area west of the K-State Salina campus as approximately 200 acres up there that's available for development for aviation aerospace activity. Reason that we identified that area, Schwan's gave that area up several years ago to go ahead and as they built their new 100,000 square foot distribution facility, no longer parked tractor trailers, refrigerated trailers up there. Opened that area up again. Now we can target that area for aviation aerospace growth and development because it's adjacent to a 12,000, 300 foot long runway, adjacent to a current taxiway, and we have connecting taxiways already into that area. So adjusting with the times and adjusting our development plans as we have other opportunities open up to infill within the existing Airport Industrial Center properties. We're glad to answer any questions that the commission may have, and thank you for your consideration.
And thank you for the update. Are there any questions for Mr. Rogers? Thank you very much.
Again, our recommendation is found on page three and carrying over to page four of your report. And we recommend that this be approved subject to six conditions and corrections, which should be addressed before recording.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment or address this issue? There being none, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Is there a motion on this issue?
I make a motion in reference to application P-13, page four slash four A. I would recommend that we approve this proposal replat subject to the conditions as outlined in our staff report.
Second? Then move, and second, is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
I just wanted to comment before a vote that-
Go ahead.
I think that anybody with the name Mr. Rogers is probably trustworthy, so I'll vote for this.
Okay. You've probably heard that one before. All right, thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, could we get who, we have Mr. Kennedy with the motion. Who was the second?
A second.
Mr. Meisel?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Item number three. Application P-98, eight B. Don't have my glasses on. Thank you. The staff report on that one.
Mr. Hers will have this report for you, Mr. Chairman.
For some of you commissioners who have been around since 2010, this will seem like deja vu because it is a revisit to a final plan review that you looked at in 2010. And in May of 2010, you looked at a final site plan review for a four-story hotel for a Holiday Inn that would have an accessory restaurant as well as meeting rooms and would be 46 feet tall and 22,600 square feet in area. That final site plan was approved eight to zero, and unfortunately, the plan never came to fruition and came to the Planning Commission again in 2012, February of 2012, for an extension, for a one-year extension. That one-year extension expired on February 7 of 2013, and therefore, a building permit cannot be issued for the hotel unless a new final site plan is reviewed and approved by this body. So that's our purpose here today. We have, once again, a Holiday Inn project that's being proposed. It is a four-story building that's 46 feet tall, and will have 115 guest rooms as well as a 2,350 square foot meeting room and a 1,980 square foot hotel/restaurant. So that's what we are dealing with. And looking at the lot coverage and other bulk regulations, the setbacks are all met by the current proposed plan. The total lot coverage is 15.9 percent, which is well under the 40 percent maximum that's allowed. The building is oriented to the north. The site plan that's on the video screen here shows you the entrance road, and this is the entrance road that is a private road that serves the Oberndale Development. This, along the western side edge of the site plan, is South Ninth Street. So patrons and customers would enter in off of Ninth Street onto the existing entrance road that you see out there today by Lowe's, and then they would enter into the Holiday Inn site from north and then circular, circled around the building. The main entrance of the hotel would also be on the north where there's a port au cachet. And there are also secondary entrances on the east and south sides. They're kind of hard to make out here, but there's a corridor that runs down the center of the hotel on the main floor with an entrance on the east side. And then you also have some entrances for employees and patrons and guests on the south side of the hotel as well. If you go to the elevation drawings there, John, the north would be fine to start with. The exterior, it's difficult to make out here, but this darker shaded area that you see is a masonry stone. It's a replica stone. And then the top half above, this is about 15 feet, I believe, and then the top half of that, the majority of the building then, is an Ephes product. And the Ephes will come in three different kinds of color: pure white, water chestnut, and antique white, with the molding and trims being the different colors, differentiating itself from the main body of the Ephes. And then the cultured masonry stone would be a color called Sedona. The, if you go to the site plan then, John, in the southeast corner, there is a enclosed dumpster facility fencing there that would be screened, and there's also screening for the outdoor utilities here on the southeast corner of the hotel, and that would be solid screen with a cedar fence. Looking at the drainage of the site, go to slide eight, please, John. The drainage of the site will have, the entire site is curved all the way around, which essentially makes a six-inch bowl for the parking lot. So any water runoff would sit inside that bowl and then is drained to three different inlets. Do you have the site plan with the inlets there? I think it's eight. Is this eight, John, or is this nine?
That's nine.
Mine be nine. Maybe it's nine. Well, there's three inlets, and the inlets would gather and pipe the off, the stormwater runoff to a pipe here that then is underground, and this is an existing pipe that goes underground and eventually gets to the existing detention pond that's east of this property. There's an existing detention pond that's south of the Lowe's building currently, and that detention pond was designed and constructed for all of the water runoff for this entire development and build-out. So right now, we know that that pond is adequately sized for the water runoff. What we don't know is, engineering department does not have calculations supporting that the interior piping structure and the inlets for this property is sufficient to get the water to the pipe and to the pond, if that makes sense. So we've got half the puzzle solved. What we need is, we need some more data solving the other half of the puzzle on how this system will carry that water to the pond sufficiently. The access, if we go back to the site plan, John, the main site plan, please. The access to the site again is from the north, and there is an access easement. It's a 64-foot wide access easement there that also functions as a utility easement, and that brings traffic in from this entrance point. This entrance point is signaled with a light, the signal light, so traffic won't be an issue. And the only issue that we see in terms of traffic and moving people and vehicles around this property is the proposed sidewalk. There is a ditch that's fairly substantial along Ninth Street that's west of this property. And so the sidewalk to connect to the 10-foot hike bike trail that currently exists will need to go probably to the north and then to the west because this is where it flattens out. Otherwise, you're looking at constructing some kind of a bridge if you want to come straight to the west to connect to the hike bike trail. So that's something that staff has noted and put on, or we would recommend as a condition. The parking for this facility, parking for hotels is based on the number of rooms that you have, plus 75 percent of any type of accessory uses that you have, which typical accessory uses that we find in hotels and we find in this particular case as well is we find restaurants and we find meeting rooms or convention rooms. And in this particular case, we do have a 1,980 square foot restaurant and a meeting room for conventions and meetings of 2,350 square feet. So for the restaurant, we count restaurant parking, we calculate it by the greater of two different formulas. One formula is we require one off-street parking space for every 50 square feet of dining area, or we require one off-street parking space for every three chairs in the dining area. In this particular case, we've got, as I mentioned, 1,980 square feet, which comes out to 40 parking spaces, and you divide that by 50. And then we have 36 proposed chairs, which comes out to 12. Well, 40 is the greater of the two, so that's the number we use. And then we have a discount of 25 percent because we only use 75 percent of that requirement. So then, in essence, the restaurant requirement, the parking requirement for the restaurant is going to be 30 spaces. The third type of use is the meeting room, and meeting rooms in hotels are a little bit more difficult and challenging to determine the parking on, and it's more challenging because there are various, there's various types of assemblies that can take place in those spaces. Now, the building code looks at it maybe a little bit differently than the Planning Commission has to. And what I mean by that is the building code requires one, requires every five square feet of the meeting room to be a single person of occupancy. So in other words, you take your total space, divide it by five, and that gives you your total occupancy allowed for that space. Well, if you have chairs in there, it's one person for every seven square feet, and if you have tables and chairs in there, it's one person for every 15 square feet. And what you'll be charged to do is figure out what is the most appropriate assumption for this use. If we use a one-person occupancy for every 15 square feet of space, assuming that we're always going to have tables and chairs in there, then we would be struck with an occupant load, occupant load of 157, which would require 53 parking spaces and 40 parking spaces after the 25 percent discount. Now, it's going to be up to you on what you think is most appropriate. Staff will mention that when we visited this exact scenario in 2010, the Planning Commission expressed their comfort with using a 1 to 15 occupant load, thinking that most of the meetings will have tables and chairs, either they be, whether they be wedding events or other meetings with groups that you typically have tables and chairs and not just chairs, or in a very, very rare instance, they didn't see it happening where you would have no chairs at all and that you would just have standing room only. So that's something to consider in your deliberations. So the total parking for the site, if you use the 1 to 15 ratio for the occupant load would be 185 parking spaces. They're currently proposing 200 on the site. If you did choose the one person for every five square feet occupant load, then the required parking would jump to 229 spaces. And as I did mention, they're proposing 200, so there would be something that would need to be worked on and modified to make those numbers work. The 200 parking spaces that are being proposed would require one van accessible and five standard accessible handicap spaces. They're showing the majority of them up front with one van accessible space, and they also have a fifth standard accessible ADA handicap stall towards the south end as well. So they do have all of the required handicap parking being proposed as part of this hotel development. Landscaping, if we can go to landscaping plan there, John, on slide seven. They have 291 lineal feet of frontage along South Ninth Street with an additional 267 lineal feet along the private entrance road here. Combined, because you do get a 30 percent discount when you have multiple frontages, they're required to have 7,812 square feet of landscaping in the front yard, and they're proposing 9,812 square feet. So they're 2,000 square feet over, so they meet their landscape area and then some. The required landscaping for 7,812 square feet is 16 tree units. They are currently proposing 10 shade trees and 30 shrubs that it will act as the parking lot screening along South Ninth Street. And those units combined are 13 tree units for this site, so they would need an additional three units here. Currently, they have three ornamental trees, which would be equal one tree unit, so they're two tree units short. And in addition to that, they do not have and are lacking a parking lot screening that they would be required to have along the private entrance road. However, if they did provide their parking lot screening here with the shrubs, that, as long as they have 20 of them, which that distance, they should have at least 20 if not more, then they would meet their 16 required tree units. The utilities on the site are, the plan for them appears to be sufficient. We don't see any issues with what they're proposing as far as bringing water onto the site and having the appropriate sewer connections as well. One exception to that that we would note is they are proposing a fire hydrant in the northeast island or peninsula right adjacent to the entrance, and that fire hydrant would have to be placed in that 64-foot access slash utility easement that's there. So that would have to be moved a little bit to the north and to the west in order to be placed inside that easement. The port au cachet, when we're looking at the fire suppression systems, is an open structure, and it's open to the elements, which means it's liable to freeze if water is in the pipes. So that suppression system will either has to be a dry system, meaning that it doesn't have water in it all the time, only when it's necessary to be pumped through, or that those pipes be filled with an antifreeze system so that they wouldn't freeze and bust and create a mess. There are two fire hydrants proposed for this development, one that we mentioned here next to the entrance, and another towards the southeast side or southwest side of the property coming off of water line down Ninth Street. Signage for this particular property, they are proposing a single wall sign on the west facade facing, or facing the west along Ninth Street here. There's a good elevation drawing of it. And an additional wall sign above the main entrance facing the north. So those would be the two wall signs they are proposing. They would be allowed to have a single pole sign not exceeding 130 square feet if they chose, and that pole sign would have a height limitation of 30 feet. So signage appears to be in line with what the signage regulations would allow. There are a few miscellaneous planning items that deal primarily with the building code, but one of them does deal with the zoning ordinance. And the zoning ordinance item is hotels are required to have an off-street loading, unloading area, and this particular plan does not show that, but we would just ask that the designer show where they plan on taking their, receiving their inventory for the restaurant and any other items that the hotel needs for operation, and those hours of delivery as well. The building also must have access to a public way for at least 60 percent of the entrances, and the number of accessible rooms must comply with the 2010 Americans with Disability Act. As with all planning items, you do have three essential items, three essential options that you could pursue. You could approve or disapprove the plan as it's submitted. You could approve the plan subject to any conditions, or you could recommend that additional work be done with modifications and have those modifications brought back to you for an additional review later on. Those would be the three options you would have. The Planning Commission must find that the proposed plan complies with all the development standards of the C-3 district, and that it demonstrates a satisfactory quality of design and compatibility with other uses and structures on nearby property. And those are the findings that you'll have to make in order to approve or make any kind of recommendations of approval for this final site development plan. Staff would recommend that you would approve the proposed site plan with the conditions that we have listed on page 14 of your report. We find, we find that the plan meets the C-3 regulations with a few minor details that are listed in that list of conditions on page 14. And at this point, we would take any questions that the commission would have of staff.
Questions for staff?
Dustin, is this the, primarily the same plan we looked at in 2010?
It has a few differences in terms of where the restaurant is located and where the meeting rooms are located and their sizes. So the sizes of those two different individual areas has been modified, and they've kind of been flip-flopped. In the original plan, this area here is where the restaurant was located with the meeting rooms located on the south portion of the building, and those items are just flip-flopped back and forth, and their areas were changed based on those different configurations. But other than that, the number of rooms is the same, the height is the same, and the exterior of the building is the same. of the building is the same. It's just that main floor, that main floor allocation of space that changed.
And the number of spaces is the same as we settled on last time?
Um, the number of spaces is very similar. I don't know if it's exactly the same, because I think the previous plan had a larger parking requirement, and is also proposing more spaces than this one does, but it's, it is very similar.
So, if we're looking at fifteen square feet for the meeting room per person, then, then they would only be required to have a hundred and eighty-five, but they're, they have, in their plan for two hundred?
Right.
So, they're, they're probably, what, about one per eleven square feet or so?
Um, well, it's, it's hard to say, because even if you do a one-to-fifteen, you're still getting a twenty-five percent discount because of it being an accessory use of a, of a hotel. So, I, I haven't worked the math. I possibly could if it was important, but we didn't figure that out.
Well, they're going above the, the fifteen square foot, and they're under on the five, but I think that we, when we talked last time, refresh my memory, Ken, did, did we decide that, that maybe that there wouldn't be that many instances where we'd have all that stuff happening at one time?
I think it was our discussion. I feel we're very comfortable with it last time, with the way it was proposed.
And the primary difference is that the restaurant seating area and size is smaller in this version than the version you saw in two thousand and ten. But hotel rooms are about the same, the meeting space is about the same, the biggest change is the restaurant is smaller.
Substantially.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
In two thousand and ten, when you determined the retail space that'd be south of Lowe's, you determined the square footage of that space, and there'd be plenty of parking left over, or maybe runover parking from that retail space? Did you determine the number of parking spaces for that, that once you figured the square footage? Does that make sense?
We, we don't know, and at this point, knows what is contemplated, south of Lowe's, and what has occurred here is that this group has purchased Lot Seven and a portion of Lot One, and it is Lot One that is south of Lowe's, and whoever develops that will have to develop it proportionally to the land area that's available. It, it is possible that you could get a retailer south of Lowe's who would have surplus parking that might be available for overflow in this case, but you need to look at this as, as whether the parking that they're providing on their own site is adequate for their uses that they're proposing.
Any other questions of staff?
I wouldn't, go ahead.
Where did you propose they, they do the unloading and the, I mean, is there, is there a plan for, for, are they unloading their, their wares and goods?
I think that's probably a question more suited for the applicant.
And the architect, how the floor plan of the building is designed, where they intend to receive their deliveries. Anytime you have a restaurant, you're going to have food trucks that will be dropping off supplies.
May we hear from the applicant? And if you would, your name, sir, and address for the secretary.
Name is Randy Pennick, Liberty, Missouri. Do you want the street and zip code, or is that good enough?
Crystal needs it. No, she's got it. Thank you.
The question again is, how is the building going to load and unload for goods and products for the restaurant, correct?
The location of where, where the plan is to provide a loading or unloading space for.
Can you pull up the first floor plan? On the east end of the building, there's an entrance in the main corridor that actually would mirror the upper floors, but on the first floor.
If he needs a pointer, Dean?
Yeah. Thank you. That would be this entrance right here, on the east side of the building, and that has a corridor. This corridor is a utility corridor, and that utility corridor would service storage and, and maintenance for the, the restaurant area. This is the kitchen for the restaurant, and this is the, the storage areas, dry storage and cooler. So, the majority of the loading and unloading for the building would be from this entrance, because there's no guest entrance at that point, because the guest would not be using this corridor at all, it's a service corridor. There's no way a guest could go to any of the public area from that entrance. There is adjacent entrances here, I mean, there's a, there's entrances on the, on the south side that, that service a patio area off the restaurant, and I think there's also an entrance off the pool here, and then, of course, the main entrance. Those are for public use. So, all of the loading and unloading would be on that east side, to where any deliveries would come in through the main entrance and basically do a route around the building to get in and out. The egress entrances or egress, proposed egresses are through the stairwells, which is located with stairwell one here, stairwell two here. Those stairwells are for egress purposes only from the upper levels, so there's no entrance off of that, those areas to the first floor either for a guest. If, if someone wishes to use those stairwells from the upper floors, second through four, to exit the building, they won't walk out into a commercial area, they'll walk right out, out of the building outside. Any other questions?
And I presume that you are comfortable with the staff's recommendation to you?
Yes.
Other questions of the applicant?
I have a question that, I want to make sure I understand this right. I, if I recall correctly, you have provision and plan on two wall signs for the building?
Yes.
West and north, and don't presently plan for a pole sign. Is that correct?
At, at this point, a pole sign hasn't been considered, but I'm not going to say that's something we wouldn't consider, because we would like to get some type of signage that would be visible from people traveling up one thirty-five from the south. To, to promote that, we would, we would maybe consider putting in the pole sign that meets the requirements.
Yeah. So, this is a question, I guess, for staff as well, and I realize that some of this is, oh, I got to be careful about how I use the word rigging around here, but we have an art display, and the issue of light affecting the display of that art has come in to play, to the degree that we're taking out lights just a little further away. And while I personally wish that the art piece were in another place where we're getting more light, I just want to express a concern that a pole sign, or any signage, is going to add wattage to that area. It's just a concern that I have. But if I understand correctly, I guess the question is, as described here, there is permission already for a sign pole of a hundred and thirty square feet, unless we would designate it differently. Correct?
Yes, but the distinction between a, a planned commercial district, which we'll get into in more, more detail now in this item, but, and a standard commercial district, is that a planned commercial district allows the planning commission, city commission, to limit or establish limits on signage. And so, the, absent those specific limitations, then the only limitation on signage is square footage. What this was done is when the Oberndale development was laid out for Lowe's and the Outlots, is that the specific parameters or limitations on signage was set out there. They, they have a right or entitlement today to put up a pole sign that is of that height and that square footage. They can't go above it, they can't go taller, they can't have three signs, they can have one, but they have that entitlement today, and the, the city commission would literally have to amend the ordinance to take that away. I'm not that familiar with the lighting issues, if we're, if we're eliminating streetlights or what it is we're doing out there, but the illumination from a pole sign is going to be much less than what you would have from a streetlight, per se. And also, given the width of, of Ninth Street and the right-ofways, the, the sign will be set back a little farther, but absent some action that would actually amend the ordinance approving this district, they are allowed to put that up, and we're just making it clear that regardless of what they say today, if, if a year and a half from now, they decide they want to put up a pole sign, they don't have to come back to you, as long as it meets those parameters. And so, in our report, we wanted to make clear what those parameters were, both so they know and you know. But even if it's not today, it could be tomorrow.
Well, for the record, I'm pleased that it's only a thirty-foot sign.
Commissioner Norland, I'll, I'll tell you, I, I have read, read over Holiday Inn's signage parameters for their, for their locations, and typically, a pole sign for them is a fabric face sign that's lit on the inside, either, either through fluorescent lamps or through LEDs, and, and the fabric is, doesn't let off as much light as what just a bare bulb would let off. So, it would be quite a bit less, yeah, to echo what Dean said.
Right.
I would think that to get south visibility for the highway and South Ninth, that the highest part of the building on the south elevation, directly opposite of the north elevation wall sign, is probably the best location. It'd have the best height, and there's a big blank panel up there on the wall now. I'd think it'd almost be better to, to drop the sign off the west end of the building and put it on that south high panel.
We would agree with that, but I think we're limited on sign square footage on the building.
Yeah, but if you dropped the one off the west end, which isn't really going to be that visible.
I would.
You could move it to the south, couldn't you?
I would interject and, and note that the allowable square footage of sign for the property is one thousand three hundred and seventy-eight square feet, so they could have signs, ample signage on all four sides if they chose.
It's something that we would, probably would consider.
Yeah, I would think that'd be more effective than a.
From a height standpoint, having a forty-six-foot building and mounting a sign to it would be higher than having a thirty-foot pole sign.
Right, and it's on a big blank wall, relatively blank wall, so you could see it from a mile away.
Yeah.
Are there other questions of the applicant? Thank you very much, sir. This being a public hearing, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this application? There being none, I'll bring it back to the commission for consideration. Gentlemen, how do you feel about the staff recommendations, and is there a motion on this item?
Well, I'm, I'm comfortable with the, the findings that we found last time in, in terms of the square footage for the meeting room, and so I guess I would make a motion that we approve application Z ninety-eight dash eight B with the nine staff recommendations.
There a second?
I'll second that.
Before we get too far, Mr. Stack noted to me that the list of conditions does not include the sidewalk modification that was mentioned in the staff report, so we'd want to add that as well if you so chose.
What was it?
The, the sidewalk.
Connection to South Ninth Street, hike and bike trail.
Right. Won't be a bridge, it'll actually be a sidewalk ran along that private street to join up with the tent.
There's essentially two options, if you can hand me the pointer.
I wouldn't think they'd choose the bridge option, but I guess we could ask.
The sidewalk currently goes through the bottom of a ditch to get to the hike and bike trail, where what Mr. Stack is saying is, we would recommend two options. One is to take it to the north and then to the west where it's flat, and so you didn't have to run it through the bottom of the ditch, or if they wanted to go directly to the west like they're proposing, construct some sort of bridge device where, or structure that you could maintain the ditch and not block the water running through it, and get across to the hike and bike trail that way.
Okay, I would, I would amend my application then to include the nine staff conditions, plus instruct the applicant's architect to work with staff to come up with a, a suitable and approachable plan for connecting to the hike bike trail.
I would second the motion as amended.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to this application, or this motion? Motion carries. Thank you. Number four, staff recommendation to reconsider our application MT, M thirteen S. And the motion to reconsider involved in that.
This is, this is coming to you as a staff initiation, and there's, there's two aspects to this, and I'll, I'll get to the first aspect first, but following the April sixteenth hearing, at which you spent a considerable amount of time discussing items, our customary staff request for removal of the sign, following your hearing, prompted us to recognize that we did not properly direct the city staff to place a sign in advance of that public hearing, and given that poss, the possibility that any subsequent action taken by the city commission on your recommendations could be, be open to challenge and invalidated on procedural grounds, having noted that, that course, before your recommendation formally went to the city commission, the city management and city attorney believe the best course of action to prevent any grounds for a procedural challenge would be to have the Salina Planning Commission reconsider their April sixteen action, and set a new hearing date to allow all three forms of notice to be provided in advance of the public hearing. I would note that representatives of, of Quick Shop are in concurrence with that, and the, the one representative of Quick Shop who is not able to attend the April sixteenth meeting is looking at as an opportunity to be present, but I'll outline on page two there, the scenario that we're looking at, and that is, on today's meeting, staff is recommending that you make a motion to reconsider your April sixteenth recommendations, set a new public hearing date for a special meeting. You'd have to look at your calendars and be agreeable to Thursday, May thirtieth, and what we did was go in and calendar where we could do that the soonest, and meet the twenty-day notice requirement, and then get the item from you to the city commission in the shortest time period. That would necessitate what we're actually going to use the date of the ninth as our goal for the sign posting, the publication in the journal, and the mailed notice. The mailed notice and the publication did occur, and of course, we did have neighbors present who received that notice. The sign posting is, is directed towards people who are outside of the two-hundred-foot notice area. So, with the chairman and the commission's concurrence, then a special meeting would be held on the, the thirtieth to consider those items again, because they're all linked, and then your recommendation would be, go forward with the fourteen-day protest period to June seventeenth, two thousand and thirteen, for city commission recommendation regard, regarding your recommendations. So, city staff and the city attorney are concurrence that this is the correct course of action, and again, Quick Shop representatives concur, and what they're determining right now is whether they want to revise their plans based on some of the input and concerns expressed by you at the April sixteenth meeting, or come back with similar plans. There's also a plan, which was discussed or suggested by Mr. Kennedy, was that why, why don't representatives of, of Quick Shop and their designers get together with city staff and hammer some of those things out? That is certainly possible, that's what they wish to do between now and May the thirtieth. However, the decisions on those aspects still, or the recommendations still lie with you, and we will, our goal is to move closer together on some of those items, and then, that, that is, the, the notice and, and when the meeting occurs is, is item one. The other aspect of this is that this item was going to get referred back to you by the city commission at the direction of city management and city attorney, because as a staff, the planning staff, the site plan and the zoning action are part and parcel of each other, and what we did is we gave you some suggested findings that related to the suitability of C-five zoning for this site. What we did not furnish for you is a What we did not furnish for you is assistance with coming up with findings to serve as a basis for your recommendations regarding the individual elements of the site plan. So what we anticipate would need to happen at a subsequent meeting, which in this case is going to be a public hearing and in other cases would have been just a, a meeting to help develop findings, but we will come back and provide with you with assistance for, you know, probably will be in the form of a closed session with the city attorney, but to develop findings relating to the Crawford access, the sign height, the front yard landscaping, the south landscape buffer width and the driveway width. So the other thing that will likely occur is there may be some alternatives that staff didn't sufficiently explore regarding the Crawford access. But I think what, if you are in concurrence with our recommendation to reconsider that action and set a new hearing date, then what you should anticipate is that we will come back with the standard staff reports, but there'll also be some findings specifically related to Crawford access to the sign height, to the front yard landscaping, to the south landscape buffer width and the driveway width. And the concern was because we only made findings or suggested findings related to the zoning aspect of that, it would have been difficult for the city commission or others to determine the findings that served as the basis for the recommendations you did make regarding the buffer, the sign height, the access, those things. So that is a, a failure on our part. To Mr. Ryan's credit, he offered up the possibility of a closed session, but we kind of said, well, and, and staff concurred that the findings that were there were supportive of the zoning action, but if you look at the individualized findings related to Crawford or no Crawford access, the height of the sign, the front yard landscaping, the buffer width and the width of the driveways, if you go through the minutes, they were certainly discussed, but staff, the planning staff failed to assist you to tie those findings to your action. So that, that would be an item that would need to occur as well. So a Thursday meeting is an odd meeting. We will discuss with you once you have questions and look at your calendars and discuss that option. There's a regular meeting scheduled for June fourth. We have no items specifically scheduled for that, so the May thirtieth meeting could be in lieu of the June fourth meeting, or if you had, say, specific topics or items of interest that you just wanted to have a opportunity to discuss or get information from on June fourth, we could do that, but we have no agenda items filed for the fourth. We do have items filed for the twenty-first, so what you'd be looking at is a meeting on the twenty-first, a special meeting on the May thirtieth and then having no meeting if that's your desire on the fourth.
Well, there was one that was in favor of the reconsideration and it was, saw, kind of saw it as a bending over on behalf of the applicant. I'm willing to make time in my schedule for the thirtieth, but we, we'll need a quorum here to do that, to have that meeting.
Does a Thursday meeting prevent any individual difficulties outside of the, I know it is Memorial Day, week, weekend is the weekend before, but it is Thursday and not-
It's Canadian Memorial.
Right, and I, I intend to be-
I don't know.
I intend to be, I'll be in Canada.
Probably have a quorum without me.
I won't be here.
You will not?
Yeah, I, I will not be here either on that day. I'm in favor of the plan, but-
Is there any, why, just a quick question, why, is there an urgency to this or could we just have it on June fourth?
It could, but the desire is to expedite, the, the real purpose is to expedite it getting to the, the city commission and that if, if you did it the fourth, then that would push it another week on the city commission. So using the, the city commission in, in getting backwards, that is the desire. We don't have Mr. Welsh or Mr. Boxer here, but if we had a quorum of five who thought they could be here, then, then we could make that motion.
Dean, what happens, let's say we set the thirtieth, then for some reason a quorum doesn't exist. Are we back in the process of re-notification, republishing and all that to get, since it is a public hearing, would we jeopardize that again? If, if a quorum doesn't exist, we can't take action, so then do you have to republish the hearing date?
Well, what, what would happen is if you met on the thirtieth and that's advertised public hearing, you would have to open the hearing, even if you had three commissioners here. They would not be able to take action on the application, but they would be able to move the hearing or continue the hearing to say the fourth.
We could take action to continue.
Yes.
And then- That wouldn't cause you to republish.
The people that were here or were interested would then know when it was moved to. But once you advertise the hearing for the thirtieth, you had, and we have, we had that happen one time and it was with an out-of-state applicant. And what we did was, we had four commissioners and we opened the meeting and everybody understood that the, they could not take action on the application and then they made a motion to continue the public hearing to a future date, which everyone was made aware of. So once, once you open the public hearing, you can continue it as long as you inform interested parties when, when that date is.
Is there a duty then to take any information that the applicant or the public wants to make at that time?
There's not a duty, there's an opportunity, but it, 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 in some ways, it's a waste of time because in, at the end of it, if you don't have a quorum, you can't vote.
But if there were some that could attend that meeting, we postponed it then.
Right, if, if, if a neighbor came to the hearing on the thirtieth and they wanted, they couldn't be there in the future and they wanted to put all that information out, they could and it would go into the record. What you cannot do if you don't have a quorum is vote.
Can we have a, can we conduct a meeting if someone phones in like we can with other public bodies? Can it be, as long as someone's on the phone, can that be considered a quorum?
I believe that, that's a question for Mr. Bengston that he has weighed in, I think, on, once before and it's been allowed in some instances, but I don't think it's been allowed for a public hearing. But we'll, we will follow up with that.
Can, let me ask you a quick question, could we, could we make this decision tonight pending, Crystal's sending all of us an email and see if there'll be a quorum on the thirtieth? Then she could send us an email, we have it tomorrow, we'd respond back.
The two-
Because my counter's not here, I think I can be here, but I'm just not real sure.
The, the two that are saying no are Norland and Bosmeyer, Mr. and Mr. Perny. So we need-
That means we've got to have-
We have potentially four and we need either Mr. Welsh or Mr. Boxer to confirm.
We've got a fifty, fifty shot. But if she could send us out an email in the morning, we could respond back and then we'd know and then the motion would stand if there is a quorum available.
Well, a motion could be made with that in it, with that in it, Ken, is that what you're talking about? Yeah.
Let me ask, assuming that you had a June fourth, if we had a June fourth regular meeting like we normally would, would your attendance be different for June fourth than May thirtieth or would you be in the same situation?
I expect to be here for the fourth.
Okay.
Iffy.
I'm iffy, but more likely, certainly than the thirtieth.
We picked up one.
Yeah, we picked up Perny.
So it's coming in from Japan. And one's flying.
All right, so we need to know, I mean, I think what we, what we would prefer is to keep the, the schedule that we have informed Quick Shop that we would try to achieve and then we'll try to confirm the quorum.
Well, then I'm ready to make a motion.
Well, as, yeah, as an optimist, let's try to do this, if you'd like to make a motion.
I just, before I was aiming, does everybody understand what we're, what there, and we'll, we'll talk about it more in detail, but what, the reason that you saw on your item today, that this Holiday Inn site plan was an administrative item, because all the zoning aspects of that were dealt with long ago. And the difference is, is that the, the site plan and the zoning for Quick Shop are, are married together, so they're all quasi-judicial in nature and not administrative. So we didn't do a good job, we, we did okay with the zoning aspect, but we did not do an okay job with those five elements. So what you will see is a, a report that provides you additional details with those things, which the other thing that will happen is that we will meet with Quick Shop and their representatives ahead of the meeting and staff and Quick Shop may be a little closer together or we may not. But that's, that's a decision for them to make. But I think our recommendation is to try to do the May thirtieth and do our best to get a quorum.
Let's give it a motion. Go ahead, Ken.
I'd make a motion to reconsider the planning commission's April sixteenth recommendation on applications M thirteen days five, Z thirteen days two and P thirteen days three slash three A and set a new public hearing date for a special meeting to be held on Thursday, May thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen and to direct staff to prepare appropriate notices and place a sign in the property based on the May thirtieth hearing schedule and to work with planning commission on appropriate findings to be advanced to the city commission. This motion is subject to the clerk sending out an email to determine if a quorum will be present.
Very, very good.
Second that.
Nice. Is there a second? Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to that? We'll move on to other matters.
For other matters, I mentioned, we do, we have May twenty-first coming up, we have two applications. We have the Storage Mark zoning and plat applications out along the north side of Schilling Road. Those were continued once by you and I believe a second time by you to the May twenty-first meeting. And then the other application we have is, it's like a, a puzzle that all fits together, but we have an application to look at the northwest corner of Greeley and Ohio where we have two doctors' offices, an insurance office, some property owned by Ben and Lavelle Frick and another insurance office. That is all zoned C one and there is a, a joint application to look at rezoning that property as more appropriately C two, which is neighborhood business. The driving force for that is there is a proposed redevelopment at the corner, we'll call it the northeast corner of Crawford and Ohio. And over in that location is an existing business, which is a hair salon, and that hair salon would like to relocate to the Jeff Wells Insurance Office, which is presently zoned C one and not C two, which is what's needed for a hair, beauty or salon, barber shop, things of that nature. So we will get into that in more detail. As part of that, the help of Mr. Kennedy and his staff, there's a public informational meeting Thursday evening. That developer is inviting neighbors in that vicinity to attend a public informational meeting about the redevelopment on that corner. Your role in that in the future will be that, as part of that proposal is a plan to close and vacate Prescott east of Ohio. There, but, where you have Bennett Pontiac, that necessitates a public hearing before the planning commission to review that. And so that, that is the connection there, but on the twenty-first, you will have two applications, one at Greeley and Ohio and one on the, the Storage Mark site. Other thing we wanted to mention or bring up is that the planning department will have a summer intern this summer and hopefully she will be coming to planning commission meetings and, and participating and sharing information with you. I've also told Mr. David Neal, who's the county planner, that one of these times we want to bring him to a city planning commission meeting and introduce him. He is from Surprise, Arizona, and he has a lot of city planning experience that has been helpful to city staff and he's a good resource to have. My final item is that we've had some news out of our consultant and from FEMA and it does not look like any new flood maps will be floated out in fiscal year two thousand and thirteen. It sounds like the soonest that revised flood maps would be brought back to us would be two thousand and fourteen. And so you'll recall, two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, in there we had the preliminary maps come out and FEMA withdrew those and took them back to FEMA headquarters with them and we're going to try again later. And what we have is the consultant who was hired by the city to look at our levees is the consultant that's been hired to prepare the new maps. And we believe that they'll be much more accurate and more reflective of how the levee and how our internal flooding touch each other. But should you get a, should you get a question from somebody that nothing is likely to happen in two thousand and thirteen?
Well, Dean, I just wanted to congratulate you on the excellent choice of language about them floating out those maps.
Okay. Well, we've been in such a drought situation here that people forget what flooding is.
I know.
I want to, I want to compliment staff too, the fact that you, I know you, how hard you've worked and how much effort staff has put into working with FEMA, trying to get new maps that are more appropriately developed to our city established. I think that's, in my opinion, it's great news. If they deferred the new maps even longer, maybe it would be okay, but, but we're okay. And I appreciate your work on that.
Yes, I, I think it was an accomplishment to give them to take the maps and take them back.
Yeah, yeah, it was. And then if I may, I want to, I want to mention, I took a Western Kansas trip down I seventy and, and this is a compliment to two cities. We, we stopped off at Russell and at Hayes and I was particularly impressed with their entrances into their city. And I just wanted to mention that I think we're still looking at that for our city, so I don't want to let that slide by unmentioned again. Hopefully, we can get back to that discussion sometime in the near future as far as gateways to Salina, because what those two communities have done, I think have enhanced the entrances to their city. They're well groomed, lighting was excellent, businesses seem to be appropriately developed around the gateways and I, I just think that's a, some model we could look at for north of Salina.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Now, what, what you need to do is you'll take some pictures next time and we'll let, we'll let you do a slideshow and, and one of our meetings here and say, this is what I like about that.
I'd be happy to.
Okay?
I've been taking pictures and in Overland Park, they have some entryways there that are set with LED lights that are solar-driven and they change color slowly, so driving down there.
We want to make that clear, that if there, if there is such a, I mean, if there's a particular topic or area of interest that a planning commissioner has and, and that's why we have other matters on the agenda, and if a planning commissioner says, I took this trip, I saw this, I want to share this with the rest of the group, let us know, we'll, we'll put them up. So if you've got pictures of Russell and Hayes and say, this is what I like and what we do here, we'd like to put that up.
You may have to make another trip to Western Kansas to get some.
There you go, Ken.
We're turned.
Thank you for your attention, we will-
You have your assignment then.
Here your ring next. Give us a call and we hope to have you on the other-